...of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in a vision with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome on this nice warm, hopefully spring day. Okay, are there any additions or questions to be made at this presented? Okay, we'll make that as soon as I can. Okay, district residents, an opportunity to ask any questions about the agenda or about school operations. Personal matters cannot be discussed now. Do you have any comments to follow if you like? So, do we have any people who would like to ask questions, comments? Maybe some more. Okay, we have one agenda change. Are there any other changes besides that? And we move on to recognitions, and tonight we will have to recognize reluctantly the retirement of Don Miller. He was been with us for what, ten, eleven years? Hey, need a motion to accept his retirement?
So.
A second?
Second.
Okay, any comments?
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
And serving the staff well as a negotiator, right, for a long time?
Yeah.
Extra time that takes. Appreciate the staff members that get involved in that stuff. Very important part, above and beyond, you don't get, I don't think you get paid for that.
Nope.
Okay, so, you know.
If you take the currency, you probably get paid in.
Because that's very important part of our work. And he doesn't, I've always heard you speak, guys speak very well of Don. So, that's, I know that's outside of his job as what he was doing, but that role was very important. Who, do we know who's stepping into that role for Don?
No, we'll be talking about that on the meeting this evening because we're going to open up a position.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed or any intentions? Motion carried. Okay. Okay, item seven, presentation regarding the library media services.
All right.
We brought our lowly assistant, Mike Hess, from office. Get set up. Be a little experimenting.
Neil, those are cobble scale colors.
They are.
I thought it was Clemson.
Neil, please.
Um, I think just a little more, Michael, a little more, that's probably good. Gail's actually going to leave.
Good. You got your slide changing, your slide showing back?
You gotta call it a favor as well.
Is that good?
I'm thinking we need a little more. I'm better looking when the lights are lower. If you go.
Almost, we just did was blacked out, so catch up down.
Sort of booty trap, so, no trick.
All right, there we go. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Gail Brison, I'm a librarian in the elementary school and the middle school. And we also have Neil Flipper, who covers the high school. So, we just wanted to take an opportunity to give you a peek into what our lives look like as librarians. So, a quick overview. One of our main jobs is to hopefully open up our students to a lifetime of the love of reading. And we try to hook them when they're young, so it's easier to keep going. So, what is it that we're doing in there, in the room with all the books? I'll start with sort of the most traditional foundations of librarianship. We aim to promote literacy. We do book talks, we do reader's advisory, which is when we work one-on-one with our patrons to get them into a book that's a good fit. Those are two of the most basic things. Teaching is a huge part of what we do. Starting right in pre-K, we start working with the standards from the American Association of School Librarians and from ISTI, which is the International Society for Technology and Education. We work on the basics of literacy, we teach research, we teach database instruction, which is how to use all of our online resources. We work on copyright education and ethics, using information in a legal and acceptable manner. And we work a lot on digital literacy and media literacy, on being a wise consumer, being a critical thinker, being a responsible user. We also provide a lot of collaboration and instructional support for the rest of the teaching staff. The high school has the writing center. We help teachers with project design. If they have a project that they're thinking of doing, they often come to us and consult about resources. Also, with our STEM initiative and with project-based learning, we provide critical support in helping teachers develop projects, find resources, and think about the best way to get their students to learn the content and the skills that they need. We also work with resource discovery, finding the right resource for any project. But we also do a whole lot more. Technology integration is a big part of what we do. We help teachers to integrate technology tools, whether it's, anything is basic as teaching third and fourth graders how to do a very simple Google Slides presentation up through tools like Prezi, Powtoons, iMovie. What are some of the greatest hits in your library, Neil?
A lot of kids are applying to use certainly the databases. And that's really kind of an essential piece because research seems to get magnified the older they get.
Databases like EndNote?
EndNote, certainly, probably not so much that. Lately, there's been a lot of interest in something called turnitin.com, which they, we just had a panel of college kids come back to speak to our 11th graders, our 12th graders, and that affords people they have a period to churn in a paper, have a check, have a check for potential players, and see how it matches up. So, it's a nice teaching tool. You know, it's not inexpensive, of course. So, kind of moving in that direction. Needs change a little bit as they get older.
Yeah. So, we provide tech support if someone can't print, if some machine isn't working. We're often the first line of attends before we get Mike on the phone. And we also do a lot of online resource management. We subscribe to a whole host of online databases through BOSI's, and there's a lot of backend work to keep those running. We have to be able to make sure that our students can log in on campus without needing a username and password. We have to look at the, all the different requirements of the different databases. We have to, we look at the usage statistics. And then usually in the spring, when we get ready to reorder, we talk to staff and find out what will be the most useful things for them in the next year. And then there's all the stuff that people don't see, the library management piece. Collection development is a huge piece of what we do, and it's largely invisible. Collection development includes the crew process, the continuous review, evaluation, and weeding, where we have to look at all of our resources in the library and make sure that they're up to date. Even though we would love to keep every library book, some of them age out. For example, a book on technology is considered beyond the useful age if it's more than three to five years old. So, we have to continually go through our collection and examine what we have, think about how the curriculum has changed, how the needs of students have changed. Students aren't reading 300-page books anymore to do a research project. So, we have to look at what's appealing, what's age-appropriate, and what's available. And also on the backend, we have to keep our library management system and online public access catalog going. Every year that involves updating our entire student database, pulling out all of the old students, updating, doing inventory. So, all of that happens kind of behind the scenes. And then we also run programming, special events, promotions. We do things like blind date with a book in February, where we wrap a whole bunch of books in plain brown paper and put a little blurb on them, and you just kind of see what you get. In the elementary school, we do a March Madness Battle of the Books, where we pit favorite picture books against each other in a series of brackets, and we come up with the favorite picture book of the year. In the middle school, I run Maker Club. We've done book clubs, and do you want to talk a little bit about?
Captain Libra is simply just kind of a library-sponsored program to encourage kids to read. Essentially, that means 100 books, and the goal is to let students read at least 100 books during their four years in high school. And if they do, then I promise them everlasting fame by putting their name on the wall in the library. Hi, Bob. So, we have a couple up there now. I've got a new one to add in the form of Gordon Bodak, who not only reads books, clearly writes for this. I don't know. She's trying to write 100 books. Someone's got names on the wall. But, you know, it's a nice achievement, and I think it should be noted. Literacy used to be the mark of an educated person, and I hope that it still is. And so, it's something that I try to encourage both as a librarian and as an English teacher. I would love to issue that same challenge to everyone in this room. Read 100 books in four years, and I'll put your name without any asterisks on the wall. And, you know, you'll be up there for as long as I'm here, maybe a little bit longer.
Are you serious?
I am quite serious, quite serious. I painted them myself.
You will take my name down?
What's that?
You will take my name down?
Well, it's, it's four years now, James, so.
Starting today.
I have no doubt that you read out your books in your lifetime.
I don't know, I could compare that with picture books in a day.
Let me qualify, frankly, with comic books. Now, so you have to read, the number we came down to is Kinsley, Seemeford Fiction. So, I think the number is 50 fiction, 20 nonfiction, 20 classics, five plays and five biographies. That's the breakdown.
Cool.
So, that's the challenge. It's probably not as, maybe invigorating as the ice bucket challenge, but I think it's something that inspires words.
And less painful.
And less pain.
Hopefully. So, with all of that already on our plates, we're still always thinking about what's next for us. And part of what's next is becoming future-ready, learning to embrace change and innovation. There is an initiative called Future-Ready Librarians. It's part of a program that a couple of different foundations and the Department of Education are promoting. And it's all about librarians promoting learning and library services so that our students and our schools will be ready to meet the challenges of the future. So, a lot of this is already what we're doing. We have collaborative spaces. Both Neil and I have made sure that our libraries are comfortable for students who are coming in to work in small groups or medium-sized groups, or even as a full class. And we need to have flexible spaces to accommodate all of that. We have instructional partnerships. We've already talked about empowering students as creators as they move from the basics of literacy to, you know, making presentations, to creating products of their knowledge. We curate digital resources and tools. Our online databases are stable of tools that we'll hand to a teacher who's looking for something to excite their students about a project. We facilitate professional learning. Like we said, people come to us to say, I need to learn a new tool, can you help me out? And then across the bottom, equitable digital access. Often, our students, this is sometimes the only library that they come to. They don't have a public library, they may not have internet access at home. So, the school library is sometimes the only place where they can come in and access all of the tools that we have. We invest strategically in digital resources. We use our budget really effectively, and thanks to BOSI's, we get great prices that let us buy an amazing suite of resources. We cultivate community partnerships. We work with the foundation, we work with outside presenters to come in and work in the library. We advocate for student privacy. We keep their information private so that they can feel comfortable coming to us to find the books and materials they need. And I think as we look forward, we seek to lead beyond the library. We seek to build that kind of collaborative leadership with teachers and community members as we look to what we can do for our students in the future. So, Neil, you're up.
I'm going to catch my notes up. I'm not as smooth as Gail.
So, while you do that, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, when we start seeing all the various parts of the school come in, one of the things we talk a lot about as a board is the sort of link of the integration from K through 12, and, you know, taking English when you get here as pre-K, is building to English and what we imagine your senior year will look like, something like that.
Right.
So, I would, you know, obviously, the library is not just for books anymore. You're well-integrated into everything. How would you grade your integration with the faculty in your building? In other words, when they're thinking about, you know, we got the Common Core, lots of change. What are my resource needs? What kinds of resources should I look at? Should they be electronic? Should they be print? Should it be Shakespeare? Should it be The Martian? Should I use The Martian to teach about potatoes, right, like I did in class? So, I'm wondering, how would you grade how well we've, as a school community, integrated the library resources and your expertise, which is obviously really clear?
I'd say.
How would you grade?
That's a hard question to answer because it looks different at different levels. The lowest levels, there's not a lot of integration in, say, pre-K through grade one. Grade two, we start to integrate a little more. We work with second grade, for example. Their end-of-the-year project is always a very big presentation that is.
That they use the library for.
They use, well, they integrate art, music, and library. And our theme is usually insects. So, they research an insect in the library.
So, it starts in second grade?
We do some, like, first grade is about to launch into biographies. So, we'll talk about biographies, we'll.
So, we are, so, I don't want to, because we'll be here all night if you go through grade by grade.
If I go grade by grade.
So, I guess what you're telling me is from K through 12, we're involved, the library is actively involved in.
Yeah, although, of course, we always feel like we could do more because librarians always feel like they can do more, right?
We keep a cape in our closet.
How am I supposed to tell them about the cape?
Uh, let's see, all right. So, perhaps a little more specifically, what does the future look like for the libraries here in Seemeford? Well, if I take a look at my crystal ball and kind of imagine the future. I do this quite a bit, and I have a lot of conversations with my principal, John King, about, well, what's the future going to look like here in Seemeford? And, let's see. Well, yes, yeah, I'm getting a vision. And really, I think it looks something like this. It requires a specialized approach to librarianship. And, you know, what that means is that it's a building-by-building approach for us. And that's not something that, the math doesn't currently add up. And I'll kind of discuss that in a little bit. We, as librarians, we want to be part of that educational process. And we think that the libraries should be a very dynamic component of that process. I think. See. So, each stop along the way should allow us to add something to that final product. In this case, as far as students go, we want a literate, digitally sophisticated student who has access to tools, they understand how to collaborate, they understand how to create new information, and also, probably more importantly, how to share that with the world responsibly. And that last word, responsibly, is very key. At each level of education, things look a little bit different. You know, in the elementary school, this would probably not be an unusual scene. I suspect that I've actually seen a number of folks in this room in the libraries doing justice. I know John White, he's not here today, but.
He is.
Actually, he just wants this.
I know that this has been part of his contribution to our district over the years. As students grow older, their needs change a little bit. And that concept of literacy expands to good digital literacy. And again, I'll talk more about that in a minute. As the students grow older, they start to take ownership of their education, and it gets even more exciting. They don't just start, they're not just consuming information, but now they're creating information as well. And then they start to really hit their stride, ideally. You know, that could be any library, anywhere. The kid on the left actually looks a little bit like Sam, I've seen Sam. You know, you can see the joy on their faces, certainly. I think arguably, the library is could potentially be the most dynamic space in school and where staff and students come together to share that knowledge. I think we're well-positioned to be the up-center of learning in our schools. The truth is, our libraries are crowded. The students love our libraries, and they come to us in droves. In the high school, we average over 1,000 visits a week. That does not include classes that come to the library. 1,000 kids who choose to come during their study hall, they come during their lunch, they come after school. Attendance in the library is not a problem. We have this going for us, and I think that we need to capitalize on that. I understand that technology is driving some of this. We have what they want in the library. We also have what they need. A couple of skilled teachers who are trained to help them make those informed, to become thoughtful digital citizens, who use those tools responsibly, efficiently, critically, and appropriately. This doesn't always happen. So, you know, there's a problem when our students have the ability to have access to such media and the ability to broadcast that far outstrips their maturity. And we know, when this happens, the results can be disastrous, right? We've seen it on every level, from elementary school to middle school to high school. We see it in the real world, and the consequences are very serious. I don't think we can afford to overlook this. I think it's a lesson that really needs to be taught in an ongoing fashion. It's not a one-and-done sort of arrangement. They're kids, they love their adults. We need some repetition. It requires time, it requires the access to those kids, and it requires resources, certainly. Those expectations rise, and the consequences as well. The instruction has to be explicit. Let's see. So, in the district, how are we doing? I think, truthfully, I would say with respect to digital literacy, I would say we're probably average. We could probably be doing better. We know that there's a lot of great tools out there. Google suite of applications for education is changing the way that we do business in schools, and it's happening very, very rapidly. It's an exciting time. Social media continues to impact us immeasurably and is infiltrated the way that we teach. We see it over and over. The growth of STEM has been well-documented. Project-based learning, certainly. The question is, how are we going to react as a district to all of these changes? Again, I think we can do better, and I'll tell you that in a moment. We're not alone, certainly. If you take a look at some of the studies, here's kind of a famous one that's been released that takes a look at students' ability to analyze and to disseminate information to identify the difference between what's actual news, right, versus fake news. It's been in the headlines quite a bit lately. And the truth is, they're not very good at it, and it's something that they need to be coached at. As adults, perhaps we could probably use a little coaching as well. Let's see. So, how do we get there? Well, how do we bring about the end-of-average support? And this will come as no surprise to you. The good news is, we have a lot of the pieces in place already. We have community support. We've always been well-supported by our community, certainly from a budgetary standpoint, and we're thankful for that. Our teachers, we have a great staff, unquestionable. They're happy to work with us, we're happy to work with them. They're creative, they're innovative, and they're motivated. Certainly administrators, I've had the good fortune to work with several over the years, the most recent being John King. And he and I probably talk, we probably talk every day. And John encourages us to be creative, to think outside the box, and helps to make clever dots. And then there's she with the Board of Education, who has reliably supported us in the form of resources. You know, our book budget has stayed the same in this difficult time of shrinking budgets, and that hasn't been the case for all of our peers in neighboring districts. We feel very fortunate about that, that you stood behind us and funded us in that way. Databases, databases aren't cheap, and we continue to work with BOSI's, and you continue to give us that advantage in our school district. So, what else, you know, besides funding, what else could we possibly do? Well, how do we get from good to great? I'm going to have to think about this for a minute. What else could we possibly do? So, how is connectedness? How can we get there? How do we become a district a destination? Well, I think, I don't know, I'm struggling. Do you have any ideas, John? That's it, that's what it comes down to, right? Making that investment in human capital. All the books in the world aren't going to do us any good if they just sit there. All those great tools that we have access to don't do any good unless we can help kids, unless we can connect kids to those tools. That's really, really essential. Excuse me, that's what we can improve for you.
So, what was you wanting, Neil?
Yeah. Right now, you're looking at the two librarians for the district. We've got three buildings, and that math doesn't work out very well. I'm going to ask Gail for the specifics here, but I know that in the elementary school, there are 24 class visits per week.
Correct.
How many book exchanges?
So, every class comes once a week for half an hour of library instruction. So, that's 24 classes pre-K to four. Grades one through four also come for an extra 30-minute book exchange time. So, that's another 16 classes.
All right, so, by my shaky math, that's 40, effectively 40 classes.
40 classes in the elementary school.
In the elementary school.
Plus, in the middle school, I teach four sections of library media literacy every day that I'm there.
That's a pretty significant course load or prep load. So, maybe, how many preps would it be?
Every week, I'm prepping for seven grade levels.
I think if you asked a teacher to do seven preps in any of the individual schools, they would laugh, and then they would probably quit. It's a lot, and she's a superstar. And we know that, you've been doing this for several years now. You know, the last time we had three librarians was when Kathy Bond retired, which would have been four years ago. So, that's really. So that's really the critical piece that's missing. We can overwhelm you with studies, and with data, and with research, how librarians impact education in the school district. We're librarians, we can do all that research, it's what we do. But is that enough to move the needle for you? How to understand that we don't want to be average? That we want to be a district that leads by example? That, and in order to do so, we need to invest in human capital. We need a third librarian, folks. You know, I worry about Gail burning out because the truth is, she's a rock star. She would never do her own form, so I'm gonna do it. She's very digitally savvy. She's got, you know, every time I talk to her, I learn something. You know, I see her with kids, and it doesn't matter what grade level. She's, I'm a Luddite by nature, and I kind of kept kicking and screaming into the digital age. And so she calls herself, excuse me, a digital migrant, or immigrant, pardon me.
But I got my citizenship early.
Yeah. Our kids might be digital natives, but they still need that guidance. And they need it throughout. Technology isn't going away, right? If anything, we're going to see the impact be greater and greater and greater. Social media not going away. They need that explicit instruction, cannot expect them to simply intuit what we want them to know. And, you know, basically, it comes down to making that commitment to our district and to our students to say, hey, we have a shortcoming here, we need to rectify it. We know how we got there. It's been a lean couple of years at a state level, at a district level. But we've got a couple of things working in our favor. Thanks to you guys and your frugality, we've managed to get through some of these difficult years. And you've had to make some difficult decisions in order to do that. Kimberly Vall, your fiscal prudence has landed us where we are now. And I think, if I'm to understand, we're in pretty good stead because, you know, you guys have made those difficult decisions, and you've had a little bit of forethought. Well, now we need that vision to come back. We need you to make that investment. I know that probably the last 10 presentations to the board were probably all the same thing, right? We need a handout, not an honors. I know this. But I have a particular passion for the library, for literacy, for books. And I think that is what moves the needle for education for a district as a whole. And we can provide that, but we need a little help from you. That's it. Any questions, Frank?
No questions from me, you're very thorough.
I have a couple that, so I guess, Gail, can you expand upon, you talked about teaching four periods a day in the middle school?
Yeah, so I teach a seventh-grade library media literacy class, which is a state requirement for them to have the library media instruction. So we've explored digital citizenship, so they've worked on learning the basics of everything from safe passwords, the real basics of digital etiquette, up through projects on digital citizenship, exploring in a little more depth things like cyberbullying and online safety. And now we're launching into a big project. They are designing and coordinating the Community Read for the middle school, which is how we'll be teaching research, resource evaluation, and sort of using that project as the lens for teaching what are pretty traditional skills of research and writing, note-taking, and building a project.
So are those students rotated out of different academic classes, or is that scheduled as a...
It's scheduled as a class as the second part of their ELA block on B days.
And it's for the entire year?
Yeah.
So four periods is the entire time you're there?
Pretty much.
You're teaching?
Yeah. Well, I switch days, so I'm in the middle school on B days.
Okay.
So I teach the four periods, and then I'm available to the rest of the staff, the other...
Collectively, how do you see yourselves fitting into the STEM initiative and focus that the district seems to be moving forward?
I don't want to speak for Gail, but I think it's a pretty exciting time period. I think that in the library, again, going back to some of the conversations that John and I have had in the past few months, the library has a vested interest in STEM. We would like to see a space dedicated to STEM, to project-based learning. We have the Writing Center, which has moved to the library. That back office used to be Kathy Bond's office, and where they did a lot of sort of the behind-the-scenes work. Well, that's now the Writing Center. We would like to add a Math Center in the library. Again, you have 1,000 kids, or pardon me, 1,000 visits, so some kids multiple times to the library. The kids aren't there. We would like to surround them with some really, physically a cool arrangement, to give them that room, to give them some of the access. For me, I envision a media studio. I think that, you know, I would like to do the announcements. I can see the robotic scheme working out of that particular space. I think we have, we have what kids want. They want to be there. Some of the reasons change, mind you. When kids are in elementary school and they're learning to read, well, certainly the primary motivation is to get a book, to check out a book. If you come to the middle school, that's get a book, play some chess.
Socialize.
Socialize, certainly. We all know that's a central component, maybe a driving component in high school. They want to be together, they want to collaborate, and they do. And I think that's one of the major movements behind STEM, that collaboration, and bringing those inner disciplines together.
Well, I won't speak for the whole board, but I know for myself, when it comes to budget, and you're correct, you're not the first person to make a presentation so far this year that says we need more people in our department. But I think we rely pretty heavily on input from building principals. So my suggestion is, while I'll lose three friends tonight, I might make two.
Yeah.
Which is not the right trend, but I think the arms you need to twist are building principals' arms to say that this is the priority, because obviously, there's a lot of demand on that. But just to put this in a little perspective, when I first was hired as the middle school principal many moons ago, there was no card catalog in the middle school. You went to the librarian and said, "What book, you know, do you have on this subject?"
Sure. We still have a card catalog, although, you know, it's kind of iconic now. And kids are confused by it, in the same way. You know, they're confused by any camera that doesn't allow you to actually look at the picture when you take it.
Neil, I have just a couple of questions. Can you talk about, is there other staffing that still supports the library?
There is, yeah. Certainly in the elementary school, we have Matt Miller, and we have Beth King in the middle school. And in the high school, there's John Dunlap. But I'm not sure about the other two, but John Dunlap is in the library when I'm not.
Is that the same, Matt and Beth?
Matt Miller is in the elementary full-time. Beth is wherever I am not. So if I'm in the elementary school, Beth King is in the middle school, and vice versa. And then in the middle school, we also have Kim Starkweather, who is in the library when I'm teaching.
John Dunlap, when I get to the library, which, you know, for me in this case is fourth period, John will, he's fourth, but then he often goes to cover study hall, he covers ISS. He also helps to assist in the phys ed room, or phys ed class. So he and I are kind of like two ships in the north. And while he's invaluable, again, a lot of the tedious work that goes into being a librarian, they can help with, certainly, and they do. And also, I guess, they also connect with kids. They're not just aides, and we don't think of them as such. They're instrumental in our success.
And you're still teaching until...
I am still teaching English. I have a couple English ten hours classes, I teach grade writing. Next semester, I will teach a class called Break Books.